At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. It is requested that members of the public hold their comments on agenda items to when they are considered. If the content is disruptive or disrespectful to the commissioners, staff, or members of the public, the individual will be told to stop speaking and to sit down. Public comment is limited to three minutes. First speaker, please write your name on the list and state it for the record.
Ellie Waller. The Agenda Item says for presentation-only overview and discussion of transfer of development rights. I look forward to this coming back to the Planning Commission for possible action and robust discussion with the public. Also, on Thursday, there is a discussion for a Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe area plan update. And I just want to express my concern to you as a board, as well as every member of this county, that when we're looking at priority setting for budgets in the future and weighing in on what's really important, where Douglas County, again, this is my opinion, Douglas County needs to be in charge of their South Lake Tahoe area plan. We are the only one for your information that TRPA is the lead on because we don't have enough staff. Staffing means we need more budget and people dedicated to some of the Tahoe issues, specifically rewriting an area plan, amending an area plan that's over 10 years old, is a big task. There's lots of things coming forward. I also sent a comment this morning, and it'll be in the Board Packet for the Commissioners, on future housing initiatives, where they want to change the density and height and massing, and allow multiple family and current single-family residences. So we have a lot of things coming up, and those are just two that I'm addressing recently and wanted to inform you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Next speaker.
Dan Ainsworth. I have some comments related to Agenda Item Two, TDRs, and open space in general. There's a team of people contemplating an effort to bring an open space question on the 2024 ballot. It would be similar in concept to the prior Question Three and incorporate a quarter cent tax increment. If passed, the funding generated would supplement the TDR program, any federal agency funding such as SNEPLMA, and any other methods available to create open space. Agenda Item Two presents the lands protected by TDRs, and maybe some are missing from that, and SNEPLMA totaling 8,200 acres. But there are many more properties and areas that are conserved. For instance, Clear Creek donated 6,000 acres. The 900-acre Bentley Longfield is now known. Howard Charney's 1,600 acres via the Genoa Ranch Course Development are protected. Clustering protected about 500 acres in total at Ahern, Dressler, and Hickey ranches. Jobbs Peak Ranch clustering resulted in 455 acres of open space. Eagle Ridge and Genoa clustered and then sold 750 acres to the Forest Service for permanent open space. Judy Sturgis donated a 700-acre conservation easement on either side of Foothill Road. And at the top of Kingsbury, Peters Flat, at 160 acres, sold to the U.S. Forest Service for open space, and maybe more than the 9,625 acres identified above. So we really have almost 18,000 acres conserved by various methods. So here's my conclusion. For a number of reasons, for county commissions, and for staff awareness, and for our upcoming effort for our ballot question and other reasons, I'd like to request the Planning Commission and Tom Delaire work together and develop an up-to-date map with all the conserved areas noted by type. I think it will be a very valuable tool in many ways. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ainsworth. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And Tom, you will address Mr. Ainsworth's comments during the presentation if necessary. This time, we will go into the Agenda and Minutes approval. Are there, then we have approval of the Agenda. Mark?
I move that we approve the Agenda for the June 13, 2023 meeting.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by Mark, second by David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On the Minutes, are there any corrections?
Madam Chair, our clerk always does an excellent job on the Minutes, but there was one place where my diction was probably not very good, and I would like to make sure that the sentence involved on the variance issue that we dealt with at the last meeting says, so that's a requirement that we're imposing on them for us allowing them the variance rather than opposing.
You got that? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
If there are no other changes or corrections, I move approval of the Minutes as corrected.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Motion by Kirk, second by Bryce. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a note that I abstained from that vote since I wasn't at the meeting.
Abstention by Mark Nenrip. And we will move into the first item on our Agenda. It is public hearing for possible action, discussion on possible code revisions recommended by the Genoa Historic District Commission, GHDC, to Douglas County Code Chapter 2.28, Genoa Historic District Commission, and Chapter 20.680, Genoa Historic GH Overlay District, including the relocation of certain provisions of Chapter 2.28 into Chapter 20.680, and the codification of guidelines and standards that GHDC uses to evaluate applications to construct, rehabilitate, remove, or otherwise change the exterior appearance of buildings and structures located within the GH Overlay District that are zoned for non-residential use. A.J. Haynes and Andrea Pauling presenting.
Thank you, Andrea Pauling from Community Development. Just for the record, good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and start our presentation for you. I wanted to let you know this has been a process for the last few years. Getting these codes updated with the Genoa Historic District and the county has been, well, long since coming. So what we're going to do today is I'm going to present certain portions of this. They're the new parts of the Genoa Historic District Code in Title 20. You guys will have in your packets the administrative code, which is Title II, and you'll have some of the other aspects of Title 20 also in your packets that we will not be discussing in full here, but we can open it up and discuss those if you have questions at a later time. All right, without further ado, we'll go ahead and get started. So this first slide is a little squished, I apologize, but I did give you guys a nice copy in your packets, and I also have copies out there for the public. This is the Genoa Historic District Overlay Map. I felt like it needed to be discussed just briefly, just so you can kind of see. Genoa Historic Boundary is that blue dotted boundary around Genoa. That's where the historic is. But the Genoa Historic District Overlay that we're discussing today are the ones in that bold pink-purple, depends on what you want to call it. Those are the only ones we're discussing today, which is the neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and public facilities. Okay? So we are not discussing any residential in Genoa. This is only the portion that we're discussing today. I just know that sometimes people get confused on that, so. All right, so just to give you guys a little history on the Historic District Code. In February of 1974, Ordinance 212 was adopted establishing the Genoa Historic District and the Genoa Historic District Commission. The purpose was to preserve and protect the buildings and places of historic interest within the Historic District that are zoned for non-residential use, which I just went over in the map. In January of 1991, the GHDC did adopt a Genoa Historic District Commission Information, Guidelines, and Regulations, it's a long one, or as they call it, the Little Brown Book. The Brown Book was never formally approved or adopted by the B.O.C.C., so it was served as guidelines only at that point. So between, I'd say approximately '91 to '21, property owners gradually stopped following the guidelines of the Brown Book. The GHDC was unable to enforce the rules designed to preserve and protect the historic buildings and places within the Historic District. And then in April 28 of 2021, pre-me being in here, the GHDC held a meeting and began discussion of revisions of the Douglas County Code for Chapters 2.28 and 20.680. It was designed to incorporate aspects of the Brown Book into the county code, and the GHDC heard and considered significant public comment during that meeting. If I were, if with my research, that happened at the CBI-C Hall, and it was quite a large and long meeting from what I was told. From that meeting, it was my predecessor, Sam Booth, and also Sam Taylor, had worked on a version of the Genoa Historic District Code, and it never was able to move forward. So in December, when I came on, we were able to review that code, and A.J. and I brought that to the December meeting of December 14. The GHDC meeting then held us that second meeting. It proposed the updates in the county code, and then again, they considered a lot of public comment in that meeting as well. After that, we made some revisions and then came back on April 26 and held a third meeting on the proposed updates to the code, and we heard a lot of public comment again, considered it, and then at that point, the GHDC did approve the proposed changes, and they moved four, zero, and one absent to recommend them to the B.O.C.C. for approval, and you. All right, so this first part, this will be on pages 132 to 133 of your packet. This is the purpose. I wanted to put this in here, just so you guys know what the purpose of the Genoa Historic District is, and the code here. The purpose of this chapter is to create the Genoa Historic Overlay District and set forth the duties of the Genoa Historic District Commission in order to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of Genoa, through the preservation and protection of historic buildings and places of historic interest, many of which are not only of local but of state and national significance, through development of an appropriate setting for these buildings, places, and districts; through the stabilization and improvement of property values, through the promotion and use of this historic area for the education, pleasure, welfare of the people, through fostering civic beauty and pride and heritage of Nevada's oldest town, and through providing for objective criteria whereby the Historic District and structures therein may obtain other recognition and funding. All right, so this is the part where I introduced it a little bit earlier. We did some highlights. We did four sections that I was going to be discussing, and A.J. will help me as well throughout. These are the new sections of the code that we're proposing. That came from the Little Brown Book and getting into Title 20. So we're looking at signs, lighting, fences, and color. All right, so on page 136 of your packet, and I'm going to stop for a second and ask if you guys wanted me to stop at each slide of the new section and do a motion at that time, or if you want me to do my entire presentation, and at the end, we can do all one motion.
I think we could go ahead and do one motion.
Okay. All right, then I'll keep powering through. All right, on page 136, signs. This is 20.680.110. No sign shall be installed, constructed, altered, relocated, removed, replaced, or otherwise changed without first obtaining a certificate of appropriateness as provided in this chapter. Just for a brief moment, a certificate of appropriateness is an application that the GHDC created, and we have updated this year. And for anyone to, that's in that overlay district in the Genoa, they have to apply for that and submit it to the Genoa Historic District for approval, including those signs which are generally exempt from regulation pursuant to Section 20.696.100, subsections, I won't read them all, of the Douglas County Code. All signs must have an appearance, color, size, font, position, method of attachment, texture of materials, and design in keeping with the character of the Historic District and the architecture of buildings to which the signs direct attention. Signs shall be further limited as follows. So we have a one through seven here. I can read them all to you. We can go one by one, or if you guys have any questions, we can open it up at that point. I figured we can probably do some questions for each of the slides, just to save some time, and then motion at the end. No questions? Okay. All right. Next slide is lighting, 20.680.120, also on 137 of your packet. No exterior light fixtures or exterior lighting shall be installed, altered, relocated, removed, replaced, or otherwise changed without first obtaining a certificate of appropriateness as provided in this chapter. B. All exterior light fixtures or exterior lighting must have an appearance, color, size, position, method of attachment, texture of materials, and design in keeping with the character of the Historic District. Exterior light fixtures and exterior lighting shall be further limited as follows. And I'll go ahead and read these just because they're short, but number one, all exterior lighting shall be shielded so that direct glare and reflections are contained within the boundaries of the parcel and shall be directed away from the adjoining properties and public right-of-ways. Number two, wall pack, flood, spot, shoebox, and other light fixtures which illuminate upwards or horizontally are not permitted. Number three, if affixed to a building, fixture style and location must be compatible with the building's architecture, site design, and landscape design. And number four, light fixture style is to be consistent throughout a building and/or Moving right along, if there's no questions? Oh. Sorry, I just assumed.
As we discussed, A, that is capital A on your list, allows for those individuals who have already non-built or installed non-conforming lighting to keep it. But as it is described in A, any modification, replacement, et cetera, at that point, they would have to comply with the new regulation.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Terrific, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. So this is 20.680.130, again, page 137 of your packet. A, no fence shall be installed, constructed, altered, relocated, removed, replaced, or otherwise changed without first obtaining a certificate of appropriateness as provided in this chapter. B, all fences must have an appearance, color, size, position, method of attachment, texture of materials, and design in keeping with the character of the Historic District. Fences shall be further limited as follows. Fences must comply with the height standards set forth in Section 20.690.030, letter F, whichever is lesser. And number two, fences made of chain link, corrugated metal plywood pallets and barbed wire are not permitted.
This is A.J. Haynes from the District Attorney's Office. There's just a, I didn't notice it until now, but B1 is missing a phrase there, a closet. The, in your code, you'll see it on page 137, it says, fences shall be limited to a maximum permitted height of six feet or the maximum permitted height set forth in Section 2690.30F, whichever is lesser. So it's stating that the maximum height is six feet unless code says otherwise. So that, I think that just got left out of the PowerPoint.
Good catch. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, A.J.
Thank you, A.J. I had it in my head, just in case somebody asked. All right. Last but not least, color, 20.680.140, also page 137 of your packet. The color of any building, sign, light fixture, or fence subject to the requirements of this chapter shall not be altered or changed without the first obtaining, without first obtaining a certificate of appropriateness. B, the colors of buildings, signs, light fixtures, or fences must have an appearance in keeping with the character of the Historic District. Any additions to that, A.J.? All right, any questions?
Question?
Yes.
Who determines the colors? How are the colors determined?
So as of right now, any color change at all will come up in front of the Genoa Historic District Commission, and at that time, they will discuss it. My next slide is going to discuss a little bit about the pamphlet that we're looking at, like a guideline, almost like that Little Brown Book that was never adopted. We're going to recreate that, and it'll have some examples in there as well. But ultimately, that will be the Genoa Historic District Commission that will discuss those.
Is there a palette that was determined turn of the century, and, or is it just going off of, well, I think at this time, during this time period, they used these colors? It's a guessing game?
Right. We're hoping it will not be a guessing game. So what our hope is, is that when we're creating this pamphlet, which I'm going to discuss here, we're going to put some specific examples in there and reference maybe specific eras and things like that. Again, it's being built up, and we're trying to update it, and that is part of what we're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question? Okay. All right, so this is the pamphlet of examples we were talking about, also on page 137 of your packet. So I kind of summed it up already, but the commission would like to prepare an informational pamphlet showing examples of signs, lighting, fences, and colors that meet the requirements of this section. So although there's going to be these examples, it will not constitute an exhaustive or complete list of approved designs and are meant to serve as a guide only, because somebody could come with something different that might not be in that pamphlet, and at that point, it's up to the Genoa Historic District Commission on whether or not they want to vote that or approve it. And B, a copy of the pamphlet, once it's done, obviously, we haven't started working on that yet, but we're hoping that that can get completed and adopted. A copy of the pamphlet shall be maintained through the Community Development Office and may be distributed to any person who requests such information upon payment of any applicable fee. The Department of Community Development may charge a fee for the pamphlet, which must not exceed the cost of preparing and printing the pamphlet. Just thought I'd throw that out there. So this slide, I've also had separate conversations with some of the Genoa Historic District members as well, because this is the additional slide from what they had seen at their, at theirs, their meeting. A.J. and I had discussed this a little bit about how can we maybe better the process of certificate of appropriateness. So additional county considerations are just some things that we put in here. The county should be processing all certificates of appropriateness applications, and what that means is we're not approving them at the county. We would just accept those certificate of appropriateness applications, and then one of us, most likely me, will reach out to the Board and schedule a meeting at that time, and then they will still approve it at the Genoa Historic District. So what we're trying to do is if something is missing from these applications, then we can go through them. we can go through them, and we can see that, and communicate that with the chairperson, which is Bob Centoni. Also, in reference to 20.680035, we want to revive the language from former .040, .040, sorry, that owners shall not apply for permits until receiving a certificate of appropriateness. Right now, we are having problems with that, and we've had problems with that for years. Come to find out that before they are up in front of the Genoa Historic District Commission and before they get that approval, that certificate of appropriateness, there are times that the owners will come to our building department. They wouldn't know, our building department would not know, and they would approve building permits and things like that prior to the approval from the Genoa Historic District. So, what we're trying to do is stop that. So, that's, we're, again, trying to streamline the process a little bit. And then also, in reference to 20.680.040, we recommend removing the 10-day review period of these applications by the chair, but keep the 60-day review by GHDC, which is, the 60-day review right now is when we schedule a public meeting. And that usually happens in, to be honest with you, less than 30 days, that we scheduled, that the meeting's scheduled, and we have that meeting. So, we're just proposing taking that out. These are just specific counting considerations at this point. Any questions on those?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you walk me through the process? If I'm a commercial establishment and I want to put up a new sign, what's the first, second, third step? And I'm walking through this to a final approval. I think I have it, but I'm not entirely clear.
Okay. Specific to Genoa Historic District, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, first and foremost, they need to submit, as of right now, I won't even discuss about what our future considerations are, but as of right now, they need to submit a certificate of appropriateness application to the chairperson. And at that point, the chairperson will look that over within 10 days and approve, like a very preliminary approval. Then they'll contact me, set a meeting for, set a date for a meeting, and then we schedule the meeting, get the agenda out there. We get to the Genoa Historic District meeting, and then at that point, they discuss it, it's on the agenda, and then it's approved at that point. And then it'll be, if they need a permit or anything like that, then they'll come to Community Development and start that process with that application.
Okay, so, the first thing to do is submit the certificate of appropriateness to the chair?
Correct.
Which is not really a formal entity. It's an individual, correct?
Correct.
And then, the chairperson will then, has how much time to review that?
Right now, in code, 10 days.
10 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, within 10 days, it's either approved or rejected. Is there an appeals process to that, or is that final?
Oh, go ahead, AJ.
This is AJ Hames from the District Attorney's Office. There's not an approval at that point, it's just a verification that the application is complete. So, if it's complete, then within that 10-day period, the chair notifies the applicant that they're setting a date for the hearing. If it's incomplete, then they have to get back to the applicant within that 10-day period and let them know what additional documents that they need.
And when you say application, it's certificate of appropriateness?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, that goes through the process, and then it comes to you?
Mm-hmm.
And then, you take, or your staff takes, how long to review that?
Actually, right now, the certificate of appropriateness doesn't come to us at all.
But it will, it will in the future.
Hopefully, yes.
Based on what we're reviewing here, it would come to Douglas County Community Development for review, and then, then it's either, and then it's approved, and then it goes back to a GHDC committee or public hearing?
Right. No, I understand the confusion. I'm using the word approved, and what I mean is, we do accept that application, we review the application, make sure that, and this is exactly what the chairperson does now. He'll look at it, review it, if everything's said and done, he'll sign it, and then set a meeting, a scheduled public meeting where we discuss it then, and that's when they approve it, or deny it.
And that board of five would make that determination?
Correct.
Okay.
With the assistance of AJ and I, as we're there.
And then, from there, if it's approved, then, and if a permit's required, then it needs to come back through Douglas County, through the Community Development permit process?
Yes.
Which is separate. Is there a box that Community Development, during plan review, or checks and says, okay, this has been through this process, check, or else it hasn't been, and it's rejected?
I'm creating that. If it goes to this, I'll be creating that process in a cella, which is our permitting.
So that they know that?
Hmm?
So that, so that the building department knows that?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, that's part of the problem, is the training of the staff in Genoa, right? In the Genoa Historic District certificate of appropriateness. And so, I would be charged with training them, creating that in a cella, and making sure that that process can't move forward without a copy of the signed and approved certificate of appropriateness.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Mark?
Yes. So, Andrea, can you give me the hierarchy? I mean, the Genoa Historic District is appointed by the Town of Genoa's Board, or by the county commissioners?
The county commissioners.
Okay, so, what does the Town of Genoa's Board do?
I actually have David Qualls here, who can answer that for you.
Okay, so, I just want to know if, my thought process is, maybe it should go to the Town of Genoa's Board for all of this, instead of going other places first, but...
I hear you. And honestly, Genoa Historic District Commission used to be under the Town of Genoa. I don't have all the history on why it's no longer. I did as much history digging as I could, but I don't have an exact answer on why it ventured out. Do you, AJ?
AJ Hames, the DA's office. I don't know. I know that at some point, someone determined that they should operate independently, but I don't know what led to that decision. So, currently, they operate independently of the Town Board.
Yes. Good?
I understand it now.
Okay. Okay, you're right.
We need Doug Ritchie here to give us the history. Bryce?
And just to follow up on what Mark was saying, so, the Town, the Town of Genoa Board is elected, but yet, the GHDC is appointed, and yet, the two of them don't have to communicate with one another with respect to this?
No.
Interesting.
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions for Andrea right now, maybe we should hear from Mr. Qualls.
Madam Chair, I do have one question. I was going to let her finish the timeline, but that's kind of self-evident, if you want to.
Yeah, we're here, on the 13th.
Okay. I think the staff has done an excellent job on this, so I really appreciate all the hard work they've put in. My question is, on the additional county considerations, if you could throw that slide up, there are three things that you discussed, and am I correct in understanding that the draft modified ordinance that we have in front of us does not include those three issues? So, is it the view of staff that these are desired things for us to add to the proposed revisions in the ordinance, and then that package would go forward to the Board of County Commissioners?
Correct.
And have those been run by formally or informally, the Town Board or the Historical District Commission?
The Genoa, yeah, the Genoa Historic District, sorry, I don't know why that didn't come out smoothly, but yes, for the GHDC, I did. I sent this to them. Actually, Marion and I, Marion Vassar and I, had a conversation, and so did Bob Centoni. And I, he was okay with it. Marion did have some concerns as well, so I'm hoping she'll come up and discuss those with you guys today.
Okay, I look forward to hearing any additional comments, because I would like to make sure that these are thoroughly vetted, if not at our level, at the Board of County Commissioners, and I think you're doing a very good job in publicizing that. So, I would appreciate making sure that there is input from all involved parties.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Andrea?
Just a little timeline there, and then, public comment, that's it. That's all I got.
Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, thank you.
No worries.
Mr. Qualls.
David Qualls, Genoa Town Manager. And you had a question for me, but I didn't hear the whole question, so I apologize. Can you repeat the question that you had for me?
Yes. My question was basically trying to understand the flow of the documents, and personally, I look at this and say, if the Town of Genoa's Board is elected, maybe they should do the appointing of the Genoa Historic District, and the Genoa Historic District should report to them, and I don't think that the Planning Department or the Building Department really should be doing anything other than saying, hey, we got approval from the Town, we checked the box, we file it, and we're done.
That's currently how it works. The Historic Committee used to fall with the Town Board. The Town Board would adjourn and immediately re-adjourn as the Historic Commission, and they would hear any pertinent agenda items at that time. I, too, do not know the history of why it was separated, but it was quite some time ago, and I, as the Town Manager, have to go through this process right now to have some construction done on our church, on the historic town church. And I just realized that I'm going to have to do it again for the fence in the park. So, it is a process, but I think that these changes that have been suggested are positive changes. I do not disagree with you in regards to having the commission reassigned to the Genoa Town Advisory Board. It's probably a productive thing, so that each board would probably then benefit from the knowledge that could be lost in this translation that's currently happening. And I think that there are some people in the audience that would probably agree with me, that it probably should come back to being the responsibility of the Genoa Town Advisory Board. But I can't make that happen by myself, so with that being said, I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. Yes, you did.
You're welcome. Any other questions of me?
Paul?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Qualls, you don't have, or do you have, any objection to, in the last slide, the second item down was that a permit could not be obtained until the certificate appropriateness was satisfied. In other words, they would not, you shall not apply for permits, the permitting department would look to see if there was a certificate of appropriateness or not. If there wasn't one, it could not issue a building permit. Do you have any difficulty with that? That's like an enforcement, it seems to me, an enforcement piece.
Right, and I don't disagree with that statement. My personal experience is, with the town church, I submitted the building permit before I knew I was required to do the certificate of appropriateness. So, my building permit was approved by the Building Department about a month or so before I applied for the certificate of appropriateness through the Historic Commission. I want to be transparent with that. I did not know that that was the process.
Right.
And again, this is going to go back to why these two groups probably should be reconnected. I don't have anything to do with the Historic Commission, other than I have to go before their commission to get things approved that I need done in the Town. It would be far simpler and less confusing if we were combined and we were all on the same page, and then I could relay the information, and other Douglas County employees wouldn't have to be worried about that.
I understand that. My point, I guess, is a little bit different, and I recognize what you've done or did, but we haven't really enacted that second point down as yet, so I don't think you did anything wrong, is my point.
Thank you.
But if we do, then it seems to me, and all that are listening, that we give the entire overlay and the guidance in that overlay and the new statute teeth.
Yes.
Because then you cannot get a building permit until you get the certificate of appropriateness.
Yes.
And you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Okay.
And I also agree that, again, if you recombine these two committees, our board meets every month. The current board for the Historic Commission meets as necessary. So, that 60-day window could get pushed out fairly significantly while people are waiting for a building, approval to proceed with a building permit, which also takes some time. So, again, being everyone's very keen as to how much time it takes to get something started before we break ground, this would streamline it, again. So, any other questions?
Not necessarily a question, but I'm a firm believer that government that's closest to the people is the best, and it sounds like the Board of County Commissioners is appointing people to your district that they may not know anything about, or you would know those people, and be able to make sure you got a good board that's reporting to you. And it would be no different for you to do what you've been, that you were doing, of adjourning as one board and then being that same board. We do that with the liquor licenses here. It'd be the same process, and I think that's something that should be looked at, going back to that system, and I think that would really solve a lot of issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Marion, would you like to come and speak?
Give me a minute.
No rush.
Marion Vassar? I live, I live just north of Genoa. Oh, I got to write my name, if I remember. We moved to Genoa in 1994, and I don't know why they separated the Historic Commission from the Town Board. It happened after we were there, but not long enough after for me to really be involved. And it was the county that did make that decision, but I don't know based on what. It was my impression that as the town was growing, they needed to have a broader Town Board, and so they made it to five, and then they, so then they couldn't have just four Historic Commission members, so they put a fifth one, so it became separated in that manner. Just what their reasoning is, I have no idea. However, I want to first and foremost apologize for my cough and my, anyway, I want to first and foremost thank Andrea and AJ for all of the time and effort that they have spent with us in trying to revise these bylaws to be more compatible to what the Town wants, and they really have spent a tremendous amount of time. I don't always agree with them, but that's what we're about, is, is, the word that starts with C, and I can't remember what it is, but to have, to come together and with something that's compatible. The biggest thing that I have about this additional county considerations is that, right now, as it happens, a person wishes to have the certificate of appropriateness, they take their plans to the President of the Commission. The President looks at them and says, yes, they are in order, and calls a meeting for the Commission to verify that everything is fine. If it isn't, he says, no, you have to go back, it isn't going to pass Historic Commission. By bringing the county in, and is this a stating to review the application first, is putting another layer of bureaucracy on it? Oh, that C-word I was looking for was compromise. Anyway, and I know that one thing that most of the Genoans are not in favor of is more bureaucracy. So, that's something that I don't quite agree with that. And in fairness to the applicant... And in fairness to the applicant, I don't quite understand why there would be a 60-day review. Right now, it's a 10-day review, and I think the President of the Commission does get that done in 10 days. So I think in fairness to the applicant, a 60-day delay is kind of long, and that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it, at least until you convince me differently. Thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to us and to staff. Are there any questions for Andrea?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, is there other public comment that might not be made by the people who's already?
Well, I hadn't opened public comment yet.
Oh, okay.
But I will. Is there public comment? Please come up, put your name on the register, and speak it for the record. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have a medical infirmity that requires me to speak very slowly. I've tried to tailor my comments to keep within the three minutes, but I would ask possible indulgence of a half a minute if I would have run over.
We'll give you four.
Thank you very much. Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, as a lifelong resident of Genoa and a Historic District stakeholder, I have documented my observations more in depth in your Agenda Page supplement pages two and three. I question the proposed revisions via three concerns. Number one, they further unnecessarily and excessively enhance the authority of a more abundant dysfunctional entity, primarily made up of appointed recently arrived non-residents who through, though possibly well-intentioned, have limited knowledge, understanding, and experience of Genoa's actual history, and as a result, commonly apply their subjective foreign aesthetic preferences. In other words, they're looking for a problem that doesn't exist to justify a solution that's unnecessary, to a degree that now constitutes harassment. Despite the overwhelming opposition of the hapless stakeholders in the district, those commercially owned primarily occupy their properties for residential use. Whereas the Nissen tapes had about a 13-minute lapse, the GHDC tapes of 28 April 21 have over a 30-minute lapse ironically, while almost a dozen stakeholders were testified against this proposal, which was not mentioned in the subject with minutes. The solution here, in other words, would be to restore the historical preservation function back to the Genoa Town Advisory Board. Number two, hopefully this Commission will direct staff to correct the spot zoning as mandated in your findings that exists right now. Number three, it's also hoped that you direct staff and regimentally County Commissioners that they address why two-thirds of the actual historic structures in Genoa are exempted from historic preservation review by virtue of being zoned SFR-1 residential, and take into consideration the actual use. Lastly, I don't think you would tolerate such excessive strictures with such a significant implications being applied to your property, so why would you apply them to other hapless, disconcerted stakeholders who only seek this wide enjoyment of their properties? In other words, this whole exercise is excessive, you're trying to kill a mosquito without a turret. And I would ask Madam Chairman that my comments be documented on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I'm going after Bill Brooks on purpose. He and I worked together on some major community things, the update of the community plan, and he, as usual, has all sorts of good ideas. In this case, though, the ones that, the major ones that he just talked about aren't agendized here, so you really can't take any action on them. And I'm just going to comment on a few. I agree with David Qualls, who now is in support of bringing the Historic Commission back underneath the Town Board. I think that'll simplify life in general for the town and for the task at hand. And I would also recommend that you approve in general the changes that Andrea and Tom and the team, and A.J. have come forth with here, for the simple reason that clarity is better than subjectivity. So no matter who is going to make the decision, whether it's a Historic District Commission or the Town Board itself when it adjourns to do that task, I think having more definition is better than less, because there's been way too much subjectivity in past decisions. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, I have a closed public comment, bring it back to the Board. Bryce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm a little bit confused, because there's been a tremendous amount of work that's been done on this over an extended period of time, and I just wonder what the discussions were, and maybe there were minutes, and I apologize if I didn't have a chance to read those, but were there discussions that were had about bringing this back to the Town Board? You know, we, there's a lot of things that come before the county that go to the Town of Minden, that go to the Town of Gardinerville, that go to the Town of Genoa, and I just have to wonder, were those discussions had and vetted out? Because, again, Andrea, you and your team have put a lot of work into this to move it in a direction to go to the county, and it seems logical that it should be under the Town of Genoa. So I'm just confused.
A.J.
A.J. Haymes, Deputy District Attorney. A couple thoughts on that. First, I just was talking to Mr. Delair, and he reminded me that Historic Districts are governed by Chapter 384 of the NRS, and those specifically authorize a Board of County Commissioners to create a Historic District and to appoint individuals to oversee that district. Specifically, they can provide for a designated review board with the power to review proposed alterations to structures within the district. That's NRS 384, Section 005, Subsection 4B. And so I think that the, just looking at this now, I think the statute seems to require that the Board of County Commissioners have oversight of the Advisory Committee, which in this case is the Historic District Commission. I don't know that anyone's done a lot of research into whether moving them under a Town Board might still qualify for the purposes of complying with the NRS, but I think that the reason currently that the Board of County Commissioners directly appoints individuals to run the Historic District, just to comply with those requirements. And then just as more of a procedural note, for purposes of this meeting, the agenda is specific to the recommendations of the Genoa Historic District Commission, and so I would just encourage the discussion to be focused on those recommendations, as that's what any action today would be allowed.
I agree, A.J. We, while it's very tempting to get into other items, we need to focus on the ordinance that is before us, focus our questions on the ordinance itself, and remember that the, any decisions or discussion with regards to the Historic District Commission and the combination of them under the Town Board or not is a policy decision and not a planning decision. I do have a question.
Madam Chair, if I may, could I follow up on that, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I understand completely, except that what is before us today does put this under Community Development where it doesn't exist today. Is that correct?
This is A.J. Haymes, Deputy District Attorney. What's before you today, the red line that you have, the ordinance is proposed, basically does a few things. It reorganizes it so that a lot of the procedural requirements are moved from Title II into Title XX, so that it's clearer for an applicant to know what they're supposed to do, who they're supposed to apply to, the timing, all of that. And then it incorporates changes from the, or guidelines from the Brown Book into code, because those had sort of been lost. I don't even know if that book is published anymore, and so those are now going to be added into the code. So it's rearranging provisions to make them clearer and easier to follow, and then adding guidelines so that the standards are clearer. There isn't anything in there that's inserting the county into the decision-making process. The only thing that was proposed by the county was, the county is involved in setting the meetings, creating the agendas, and things like that, more administrative functions. And so the recommendation from Community Development was, instead of requiring an applicant to go seek out the chair, who isn't clearly identified in code, they could just submit their application directly to the Department of Community Development, who would then work with the Board to set the hearing date to hear that application for the certificate of appropriateness. Because currently, you have to go find the chair and submit your application to the chair, and then the chair contacts Community Development to work on the agenda and setting the time and the date and all that kind of stuff. So it just seemed clearer to submit it to the county, but the overview process wouldn't, would still not be the county. The actual review of the application would be done by the Historic District Commission, whether you adopt the red line as-is, or whether you accepted the proposal of Community Development and just replaced chairperson with Community Development in that section.
Agreed, with one caveat, that there is an enforcement provision that is now added, that the enforcement of all of this will be done by the county.
That provision also is currently in the code, so what happened was, during the multi-year review and revision process, there was a piece of code, it was in Section 040, that required individuals to obtain the certificate of appropriateness before they got their permits from the county. And for some reason, through the review and revision process, that got deleted, and it seems to me that it was probably an omission just by, I don't know, I don't know why that was removed. I think that needs to be added back in, because that really is the only way to enforce the code, other than sending a code enforcement officer after the fact to say, hey, you need to take the sign down, which is much more difficult, much easier to just enforce it on the front end. So that's not a, it is a change that the county's recommending from the red line, but it's not a change to the code itself, because it's currently in the code now. It was just, I believe, omitted inadvertently from the red line. So what we're suggesting is that that omission be taken out, that that original language be put back in, because that is what makes it enforceable.
Okay. Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to respond to Marion Vassar's comments that she made during public comments, which I thought were very thoughtful, and then perhaps staff may have additional comments to make. But on the third point, under additional county considerations, where it recommends removing the 10-day review period of said applicants by the chair, and instead having a 60-day review by the Historical District, it would be my opinion that that's a wise move, because it's very concerning when one person has the authority to do something. So I think moving it from the chair, removing it from the chair is the right way to go. And then in response, 60 days, I think, is probably necessary for a public body, as far as reviewing what they need to review, and then providing public notice under the open meeting law. So I think that's probably a valid outside window. Hopefully, it would be quicker than the 60 days, but I think that's a necessary provision that staff is recommending. So I think that language, to me, is logical and an important change to add to the code revisions.
Okay, I can ask a couple of questions. One, Kirk brought up a point, is the GHDC required to notice the same as we are or any other Board?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so the 60-day is an adequate time period? You don't think it's too long?
No, I don't.
Okay, and another question is, when the permit is posted, can we post the certificate of appropriateness? Because I'm concerned that Mr. Qualls can verify whether or not people come in questioning, what are they doing? Are they modifying this building to where it's going to be a problem? So if we post the certificate with the permit, would that take care of that? Can we require that?
So the certificate of appropriateness will get generated based on the Board's, the GHDC's commission, on what their decision is on the application, and we would have, like, a certificate of occupancy-type document that could be then posted or provided to the applicant to post, but we don't have that as a requirement to post today. We're adding that part into the process, so we actually have a document for the Building Department internally, that we would have that certificate available if somebody asked for it, but...
And I think if it's posted, it might quell some of the uproar if people are coming by, or residents, or, I don't know. It might. And let's see. I think that's it for my questions. I don't see anything else. Is there anything else? Paul.
Wouldn't it be easier if we adopted the recommendation, which was the Paragraph 2 that we discussed about enforcement, putting teeth in it, such that, subsequent to the adoption of that, that Mr. Qualls agreed with also, if a permit was issued by the Building Department, one could assume, because they're the last check about the certificate of appropriateness, one could assume that all of the various procedures were followed.
Yes, absolutely. Once I, once we get the training in and let, you know, the Building Department know, and one of the, I mean, and I know I already mentioned this, but they would need a copy of that certificate of appropriateness application that's been signed and approved in order for them to move on. Andrea, Pauling for the record, sorry.
Any other questions? Then I think we're ready for a motion. Paul.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the modified, all of the modifications that are recommended by staff, to 2680-35, 035, plus the language reinserted from former Point 040, that owners shall not apply for permits, and add the phrase, and a permit shall not be issued until receive a certificate of appropriateness has been received.
Madam Chairman, a point of parliamentary inquiry, would, Paul, would your motion also incorporate the first and the third additional county considerations? considerations on packet page 161? You referenced the Point 035 language, but can we clarify whether we're including all three of those items for a modification to the proposed red line?
Yes, those three recommendations, indeed. I don't know where, the only reason why I left them out, and that was because I don't know where Items One and Three would appear. So I'm going to have to leave it to staff. Do you see what I mean? Item One particularly about the certificate of appropriateness. I can't make a specific modification.
If that's the case, Madam Chair, then I would second the motion to approve the proposed modifications with the additional county considerations on packet page 161.
All those in favor?
Madam Chair, can we have some discussion for a second?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I am, I'm going to move to, in favor of this. However, I just want to go on the record to say that I do appreciate the work that staff and the commission and the town have done on this. I think there's a lot of hard work and it doesn't seem to me that it should be as complicated as it is, but that's government, that's the way it goes. However, I do have a concern that the town of Genoa appears absent from this process, which I don't really understand as an elected body, that they're not, that they don't participate in this process. But that being said, I'm not here to turn the apple cart upside down. So it's been through that, there's been a lot of hard work done, a lot of public comment and input. And so for that reason, I'll move to approve the motion.
Paul, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, ma'am, except I just took it as Commissioner Glutes is a positive vote, so I believe it passed unanimously.
Revote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Do we need five minutes or just keep going? Keep going. Thank you. Hold on, I've got so many papers. For presentation only, overview and discussion of the county's Transfer Development Rights TDR program. Tom Delair and Kate Marolis O'Neil from Community Development presenting.
For the record, Kate Marolis O'Neil, Douglas County Planning Division. I want to thank all of you today for your time. Tom Delair and I will be tag teaming this presentation. We want to share with you just a broad overview of our current TDR program. We are in the process of advertising a request for quote, better known as an RFQ, to examine and improve on our TDR program. So what is transfer development rights? A lot of people might not know that. So the county started a transfer development right program in 1996, and this allows property owners in what we call sending areas, which are A-19 or FR-19 zoning districts, to transfer their development rights to designated receiving areas based on the execution of conservation easements. And I'm going to tag team to my partner.
Thank you, Kate. This is Tom Delair for the record. I guess I didn't do that. Last item is actually state my name for the record, so apologies for that. The transfer of development rights, conservation easements, this is a map that was actually published in the master plan, which is why we separated them out from the rest of the open space in the county. And we'll get to that point that Dan had brought up earlier in the meeting under public comment in a few slides, so just bear with me. But this was updated by GIS based on certificates that the department has issued over the past several months. So you will see there in the green areas, that is the Wild Horse parcels that were dedicated or purchased, I'm not sure exactly what happened there, from Bentley. For the Wild Horse areas, they did come in, they've received TDRs. We'll review that whole application here in a second as far as the quantity of those TDRs. But we do have a few parcel properties identified in the county. They're all listed there in the table with the appropriate areas. And hopefully, you guys can read your handout. This is pretty small. On my sheet, I can't read it, but the total amount, the total acreage that has, under the TDR conservation easement is 5,802. You see that total at the top of the sheet on the next slide. And the reason we put this slide in was because we didn't want to cause confusion with the SNPLMA. So if you look at the 2020 master plan, those properties for Bentley on the, in the Pine Nut Mountain Range was shown as a prior application to SNPLMA. I believe they had applied for that funding source through SNPLMA several years ago, or a couple of years ago. And it was included in the master plan when we did the update in 2020. It was a significant part, a significant area out in the Pine Nuts, and that was reduced down to what you saw on the prior slide for the Wild Horse parcels that they actually extracted and were certified for, those TDRs. This particular one is all the parcels and properties, and you can see that some of that was for up there at Clear Creek. That was expressed, that that was through SNPLMA as well. These are the projects specifically to that program in Douglas County, and the total acreage is now reduced down to the 12,908 acres, I believe. And so you can see that in the table, those acreages are identified by each of the projects. We didn't do the open space parcels. We can show you those here in a second, but I didn't include that in the open space. Those were like planned development applications where they had come in and had for, or required clustering. So they were able to get an increased density for where their parcels are located with smaller lots. And in lieu of that, they were able to have an open space project and dedicated land in open space, which is through a planned development process or a development process, not through a conservation easement like this. So they did have to record, I believe they had to record conservation easements for those projects as part of the process. There was been some discussions, I think with a number of you guys and also the public, as far as our water basins. And I wanted to include this today just as an overview. These are the state engineers designated groundwater basins of Nevada. And basically, it's based on like the Walker River. You can see the blow up to the right, the Walker River and the Carson River, also Lake Tahoe also has an area dedicated for the drainage. And basically, it's where the land slopes in such a way that water, if it hit a ridge, would flow to the Carson River or the Walker River. There's actually a sign on Highway 395 as you're heading towards Topaz that shows that summit and lets you know you're in the Walker River Basin or the Carson River Basin. But this is identified on the map, so these areas are fairly important when it comes to tracking the water usage, not only the surface water but groundwater as well. The Conservation Subconservancy District uses these quite regularly and in their communications. I believe it's 105, is that right? For the Carson Valley. That's for the Carson River Basin, and that's our basin, the main basin in Douglas County is that, and one for 105. You can see, I think it's 106 for the Antelope Valley. And then we do have in Douglas County, you can see the black and white line separating Lyon County and Douglas County there. And you can see that we do have some land that does slope towards Lyon County and the Walker River in the northern valleys as well. So it is important to note that we do have a number of basins, and I just wanted to make sure you guys knew where that source was at and where that's coming from. The future land use and receiving, so a TDR is basically, bare bones, is like the A-19 zone of AG or FR-19, which is a 19-acre parcel, minimum parcel size. And if you have 20, or if you have 20 acres, you'd have one parcel. If you have like 40 acres, you could have two parcels in that zone. That's the density, that's a TDR that you're creating. One parcel for every certain amount of acres that's identified in that zoning. So can you open the, we have in the master plan, the future land use in receiving areas where TDRs, where you create TDRs over here, and you want to use those TDRs to develop the receiving area. The receiving area is a critical point in the master plan where it's areas that we have identified in the master plan as, can you turn the future land use on over there? And we've identified the future land use areas where we want to see growth. And our current master plan shows the orange areas as those areas where we want to see growth. So you see some splotches in the ranchos. Can you highlight that on the, yeah, right in there? So the ranchos, you've got Bing Pit. Looks like there's a project, it's where the horse racing track is at on Centerville, that parcel. And then there's a large orange area around the south and the east side of the ranchos, which is over by Pawaloo and the middle, and the Scarsely, is it Scarsely? Scarsely Elementary Schools. And it goes all the way to the tribe, extends down to the tribe lands before it hits the Carson River. So there's a significant amount of acreage there that we are perceiving as a receiving area where we want to see the development. And they would be served by water and sewer services because they are in an urban service boundary where the Gardnerville Ranchos General Improvement District would serve that. You also see Corley Ranch, which is right above the 395, just east of, east of the Carson River, Corley Ranch. That has a specific plan identified on it. We will be seeing some motion on that project coming soon. But it is, it is a receiving area, they require TDRs for that. And eventually, we're going to get to a point where we may not have enough TDRs for these types of developments, which could hold up progress, that, as far as that goes. But Virginia Ranch is another area, and then the Park Ranch Holdings, which is just north of that. And that's a significant area. We had moved that area from the Topaz area plan with a development agreement, and it capped the use in that whole zone there, that whole area, basically east of the town board boundary to Mueller Parkway to, I think it was about 2,200 homes. And so that is, that is in a development agreement that the county commission had approved a couple of years ago. And then there's small splotches in Minden under subdivisions like Hayborn Meadows, which is still being built out. And we've got a small area just north of the Monterra Phase One or the Minden Elementary School, that development is still there in receiving area and can still be built out. And then you've also got the property along Mueller Parkway on either side of Mueller is still receiving area, which is actually owned by Bentley Properties. And they are having some plans developed for that. And then if you go further north, there's another large area of receiving area up by the airport. It's south of Johnson Lane, east of Douglas County Airport, and extends down into East Valley Road. So those are the areas that we have identified in our master plan as being areas we want to see developed. We don't have a plan for what that development looks like. We're waiting for the property owner to come up with that plan. And so I think that's part of, well, I know that's part of what we're looking at with this study, that the request for qualifications is out right now. We did extend it. We had a deadline of June 8th, and the, all the consultants are just extremely busy this time of year. And so we extended it to June 30th. We worked out the funding issue that we ran into, which is why they had a tight schedule to begin with. And with, we worked that out with finance, and we were able to use this year's monies into next year's simple documentation in the budget paperwork, and then we will award that in July. So we are working towards that, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that area. Can you zoom to TRE? There is some small areas, when we remove that acreage with David Park's application or Park Ranch Holdings application, there are some little small pockets of parcels that are in TRE. Most of these parcels, I think with the exception of two, there are a number of parcels there that have homes on them already. It looks like it may be a little more difficult to propose a project on those. So I'm not sure that those will amount to much in the future, but it's still some cleanup that we've got to do yet in the master plan. But there are those three properties there you can see identified here on this map that has that. If you turn the future land use map off, we've got the open space and all the properties are shown here. So you can see right there, we're looking at TRE in the green areas are open space properties from a development, that TRE development in this particular case. The green areas, I think, are SNPLMA, that you can see that large shaded area, that one's SNPLMA. I can't remember what the green one identified. Can you turn the key on? It's off to the right. The little three up there. That is the agricultural conservation easement. So they did create an easement for that, that kind of a cyan color. And so when you pan out, you can see all the properties within Douglas County on this particular, in Douglas County showing everything. But that's why we had separated the TDRs from SNPLMA from the open space. All the green parcels that you see through the valley there are from development, creating an open space based on the clustering or just a dedicated conservation easement without any ties to TDRs or the SNPLMA funding. So you can see, you know, in all, we have quite a bit of land in Douglas County. I don't know what that total is, but I will get that for you guys. I'll have to have GIS work on that for me. So, but I just want to make sure that that's clear. Hopefully, that answers Mr. Hainsworth's question.
Yeah. I think...
Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Would you consider development rights that have been retired? They're not TDRs, but what would you consider those? Would you consider those just plain conservation easements? Would you consider them to be, they're not clustered developments, what category would you put those in?
The, I'm not sure I'm following what the question is. The TDRs, you're looking for the development rights that have been used?
They've just been retired. They've just gone away. Like somebody they have, like I'm talking with Jacques Chigoy, and he said the long field off of Mueller that Mr. Bentley, years and years and years ago, had development rights, and he just retired them. They just went away. He removed them. He bought what? Genoa Lakes?
So the county certifies the TDRs. I don't, I mean, if once we certify them, I imagine they're on the record until they're used. used up on development in the receiving area zones. I think Rocky Terrace was required to do a master plan amendment to receiving area in order to do that development. That was added in addition to the master plan. And I think as people proposed those newer, higher density type projects that really don't fit, that's how you end up utilizing TDRs, you know, for the development. If the development makes sense, it's not identified in the master plan. But I don't know that we have a process, that I'm aware of, that we retire them, just do they just go away? They're certified and they're on the records of being certified of that we have. Once you sell them off to another developer, they've got to prove the lineage of that certificate. When we come forward with a final map on a project that is being developed within a receiving area, and then we will review that lineage of the right to make sure that it's been certified. And so we have record of that.
So if, and I could be bouncing off the walls on this, every piece of land or every acre or group of acres has a development right attached to it in the county and there is a way to track that development right regardless of how old it is?
Yeah, we have, the certificates come through the county as an application process. We've got those certificates on file and it's based on the year that they were issued and the certificate number. So each one has its own number, starts at 001 every year. It starts over. So we have issued, and I think that's the next slide actually, isn't it? That Kate has, that she will talk about on how these get certified. And then this gets recorded and it's recorded based on all the APN numbers on that list of, on the certificate. So I'll let Kate kind of explain that process on how we certify them and see if that answers the question.
Now, I'm just thinking, as you're going through all this and all the undeveloped land in the county and looking at the TDRs and conservation easements, et cetera, that there has to be land out in the county that somebody owned decades ago or centuries ago that is just there and that nobody knows who owns it and the development rights are just gone because nobody knows who owns the land. Just it's sitting.
Thank you again, Kate Morales O'Neill, Douglas County Planning Division. So this is, so when, just kind of bouncing off what Chairwoman Casey had just brought up, because it can be kind of confusing, like what do people do? Even applicants can be a little confused about, you know, certifying their TDRs. And in fact, AJ and Tom and myself, and we kind of had to sit down and go through the process to kind of clarify, because it's, one of the thing I noticed when I got here and I started getting the applications is the continuity was broken. It just seemed like we were doing a lot of different things at different times, understandably so, just because I don't think a process was really set. That really was easy to follow. So if someone wants to, this is an example of the American Wild Horse. And I'm sorry, it was really hard, these documents, to try to blow up into a PowerPoint. I do have it digitally, so I can obviously email all of you a copy of it. So when someone applies, this was for the American Wild Horse. So what happens is the applicant is, it gives me all the parcel numbers, the APN numbers, the amount of acreage, also the zoning, the amount of acreage in the sending parcel. If any of it is less, that is non-contiguous, meaning it's not right next to the next parcel and it's less than 100 yards, there's a 100 yards. It's almost football season, sorry. I'm a huge fan. So if it's less than 100 yard, 100 acres, oh good lord, then there's also a column for that. And then if how much of that sending parcel is in the floodplain, you also get bonuses for that. So what this sheet does, after many, many times that I've tried it and we had so many trials and errors and it was unreal, I think we finally got it. So it will automatically calculate for you. So for instance, this automatically calculated a total development rights of 109. So what I'm going to do now is I'll go to, I'm going to bring up the actual document so you can see it. So remember that number of 109. So what I'm going to do is let's just go in here and change this to 400. Let's change this to 2,000. Let's change this to how many, how much of it is contiguous? We're going to say all of it is contiguous. And in this one, we're going to say that 850 of those 2,000 acres are in 100 floodzone. And we're going to say out of this 400, we'll say 250 are in that floodzone. So now it's going to change because there's going to be bonus points. So it'll automatically calculate and now there's 206 TDRs would be the new total. So it is an active sheet, so we will be updating the application as far as this is what they'll use and then I'll use it or whoever has the planning application to ensure that the calculation is correct. Once I've determined the calculation is correct, we do, I do certify the application. They will get a draft certificate saying, okay, you now have 206 TDRs. It is up to them to record that document. So once they are going to transfer those to a project, they will have to come back to the county and give us that document showing that that has been certified and they'd like to utilize those transferred development rights for a project. We also ensure that when they do apply, that we have to have the recorded deed for the conservation easement and we also require that at application. So we're trying to streamline the process because it was very confusing for me, I know at first. So hopefully this sheet has helped. In the last couple of applications, it's been very resourceful and helpful. So let me go back to the PowerPoint here. So now we have, slideshow, my glasses on. So, oops. So right now, as far as certification goes, we have certified 4,242 TDRs. So the process I just described, that's how many we have logged. As far as what has been used or transferred, I should say transferred, is 3,769. So those have been transferred to a project and that leaves us with 473 currently, that have not, that are sitting there that haven't been transferred to any project as of yet. If that makes sense. And then you might have questions about this slide and I'll go back to it, don't worry, if you do. So again, I mentioned earlier as far as that we have advertised a request for quote or an RFQ to really examine and study our current program. One of the things AJ, Tom and myself, when we were in that meeting going over the TDR code, is trying to make more sense of that also. Make it more clear for people to read and update some of the things that we feel need to be revised. But in doing this RFQ, I won't go through all of them, but these are all items that were in the scope of work that was defined in our RFQ. The study will evaluate, for instance, vacant areas within Douglas County, already zoned A-19 and RF-19 and FR-40, which are allowed to be conserved per code. Also review, like I said, current TDR code, we think that's really important, and provide recommendations of code revisions. Also analyze our TDR program versus land for sale and determine whether implementing a new program, programs like an impact fee based on square footage, maybe a TDR bank and/or requiring TDRs for new dwelling units or commercial buildings, to see and determine if that would be beneficial to the county. So I propose that when we do complete the RFQ and we have the study back, that we revisit with you and, you know, share with you our findings and what they've determined the best move for, step forward would be for the program to enhance it and make it more viable and useful for the county. And with that, again, thank you for your time today and attention and if you have any questions for Tom and I.
Kate, a question, with all the flooding that we had and the sliding over in the East Valley, the print on the slide, I can't read it all that well. Does it say we're going to reevaluate, that had the receiving areas located in the, yeah, on the receiving areas on the East Valley? Are we going to in the RFQ have anything reevaluating the location in the East Valley because of the flooding that we had in the East Valley? That maybe some of that area is not going to be appropriate for the densities that are projected?
We don't, Tom Delair for the record, we don't have, in receiving area doesn't have a designated density. It's going to depend on the applicant and the application process that they're bringing it through. Obviously, it has to meet the findings in the code and then you guys determine that. And I don't anticipate high-density homes in the East Valley area with Johnson Lane and East Valley being five acres and less. I mean, it just doesn't seem reasonable. But their floodplain through that particular section is from the airport wash and that is one of the washes that Douglas County has not analyzed further. It's in between, because there isn't any development today, there's I think one house just was installed there on East Valley Road and they built their entire area up. They own a larger parcel, but the area where they actually have the house was built up and survived very well, actually, the last rain event that happened. And I think those floodplain has been, that floodplain area has been studied at one point by FEMA and has been designated and is on the map. So that would be all part of the project review as it comes forward. I think what we're looking at is if we need to evaluate and do a master plan amendment and that is not part of this, it could be one of the recommendations for sure, not only from the study but from this body, that the board consider going back and removing receiving area altogether, but that would be a separate, I think, a separate request.
Thank you. Other questions? David?
Tom, I don't know, I've been kind of disappointed in the TDR program and receiving areas. Are we looking at any other ways to make this work better?
Yeah, it does have that in there. On the study, we do have that analyzed on whether or not, just when you increase the zoning, I think we've talked about that, whereas if you, if that moves forward and we have that provision in the ordinance that gets presented, then we would need to look at the receiving area and decide in Douglas County, what exactly do those areas look like? What is it that you all think the receiving area needs to look like? What size parcel? What is the density? What, is it multifamily or is it, do we need more commercial? I don't know that we're there yet with the studies. I have been struggling to get the transportation plan updated. That came forward in 2015. I think there was a version of it in 2017 and it finally got approved in 2019, which means we needed to start on that update in 2020. And we're working through that. We have a contract with Campo on analyzing our traffic. I think that's our first step. Once we get that, those numbers identified, the transportation plan will look at the receiving areas and see what kind of volume the traffic generates. And it would be probably at a maximum density. I mean, I, you know, or we can use an average density in the past, you know, 30 years or 40 years in that area, what is that density and then use that number for a projection. It's going to give us a lot of information on how our roads are handling and I think we have that conversation at that time when the data is available. My plan for the transportation plan is to update the intersections, do an intersection design, say this is where we're at. Our level of service may be a C today, but by 2020, it is expected to be an F. And how do we mitigate that? And how much does it cost? So there's a fee associated with that as development happens, you know? There's also a fee that has to happen from the existing residents. Not that they have to pay it, but that's the portion that the county is going to be responsible for, right? And so that use of that intersection based on the development. And so we'll get to that point in the next iteration of the transportation plan, which will be helpful to this conversation.
Also, I know there's receiving areas around the ranchos and I have a concern because I live in the ranchos and the wells I have are not really great. And there's been problem with wells going almost dry or too much arsenic and all that kind of thing. And I think the reason for that is where the bulk of the water in the valley that's in the aquifer is really underneath Minden and Gardner Ville. And the ranchos are kind of on a shelf. And so the aquifer isn't deep where the ranchos are located. And I'm wondering about how wise is it to keep receiving area if there's a water issue for that area?
Yeah, we're working on a water connection between Gardner Ville and the ranchos. I think Greg Reed and the Gardner Ville Water Company manager now, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I drew a blank. Anyway, they have been in discussions and are working on that connection. I think there's a project being proposed pretty much at a what-if kind of scenario level right now in our department at that intersection of Riverview and 395 around the dentist office that will, that'll bring that to head more quickly. Grid has the right to the well that is at the nursery yard where the balloons are at now, where the old nursery yard is, and there's a recorded document to that right. So they're going to have to get the water across the river somehow at some point and then, which would be an easy connection if, by going through underneath 395 at some point to that connector. So I think it's doable. It's just we need to get to that point where water can be transferred over to grid and there should be no problem.
Yeah, my understanding is that that connection is primarily just as an emergency situation, not a permanent water connection, but I may be wrong on that.
Okay.
Mark?
So Tom, you guys are going to open the request for quotes on the 30th of June, assuming you get some. Is there, is it allowed to have public input? Meaning, could I look at the proposals before you award them or is that against the rules?
I believe that the staff, it's a, you know, it's a contract from the staff. I mean, we could, I imagine we can share that information with you. We already have a panel set up in the agreement. So it was, it had to be explained to each of the individuals that they are, that is interested in responding to the RFQ. So we've already set that up at a staff level. We can, I'll have to get back with you on the official answer for that.
And remember, Ned and Rip, it was, the scope of work is the meeting when we discuss, you know, TDRs. So I really went from that meeting and with AJ and, you know, what is appropriate for the scope of work that I included in the RFQ, so.
No, I understand RFQ is already out there. I'm talking about awarding it.
Other questions? I think this is really exciting. It's been a long time coming. I don't think TDRs are going to do it all. I think working on the quarter cent is exciting. As I've said before, if we want to maintain our open space, we're going As I've said before, if we want to maintain our open space, we're going to have to pay for it one way or the other, and this is just one more tool in preserving our agriculture and the openness and loveliness of our county. I thank you for all the hard work you put into putting this document together, and I'm really excited to see what comes out of it. Is there anything else? No?
Well, I'd like to say thank you to you guys as well. I appreciate it.
Then I will open for closing public comment.
I'd also like to thank staff for bringing this forward, another measure of trying to preserve some of our historical open space. I'll look forward to the company that fills this or consultant. I mean, there's lots of questions that can be asked after it's awarded. I'm hoping that there is benefits to further FEMA analysis coming forward. I don't know if and how far cluster development is going to be studied. That's a whole entity unto itself. I personally believe cluster development isn't being proposed as intended when it was first out. I'm just making my personal opinions made aware of. I don't really know how much depth the study will go into when it comes to how we apply the cluster developments. I know there is one proposed that went through pre-application for Clear Creek, 545 acres. It will probably get bonus units. Again, for the public to understand the bonus unit portion of this is really important. And then I'll get back to when we get to Title 20, downward lighting isn't cookie cutter. It really is different for where it's being applied. If somebody sits up on a hill, downward lights still get the guy downhill. We have an issue in my neighborhood where somebody has whiffs of this much on a white building with down, it lights it up, it looks like a shopping center on the corner of Bavarian and Jack's Valley Road. Thankfully, our homeowners group has him turning his lights off at 10 o'clock in respect to the neighbors. So lots of things, and I will reiterate my opening public comment. I appreciate everything the community development does and the staff associated in other departments, but we need more people. We got to figure out how to get that into the budget. We have so many things I believe that we could do a better job at, notwithstanding the excellent work that's brought to us today within the realm of not having enough staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Anyone else? Then I will close public comment, bring you back to the commission. I just want to let everyone know we will have a July meeting. So there you are. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Have a wonderful month, and we will see you in July.